I'd like to call this committee of the meeting of April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two to order with adoption of the agenda. Uh, so I want to make that motion for me, Council Ryan, Council Brooksville, all in favor. Motions carried, adoption of the minutes from the committee of the whole of March tenth. So I want to make that motion, Council Brooksville, Council Palmer, all in favor, motions carried. Special Parks Master Plan Committee, the whole meeting minutes of March fifteenth, so we'll make that motion, Council Brooksville. Seconded by Council Ryan, all in favor, motions carried, and the Special Budget Committee of the whole meeting minutes of March fifteenth. Council Brooksville, Council Ryan, all in favor, thank you. Any business arising from the committee of the whole of March tenth? Saying none, any business arising from the Special Parks Master Plan Committee of the whole, Council Palmer.
I believe that that is now out for public comment, so just.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'd be good for public to take a look.
Perfect, thank you for that, appreciate that. And then any business arising from the Budget Committee of March fifteenth? Saying none, we're going to move on to delegations and presentations. We have people here for B C Transit, is that correct, Mr. Black?
Yes, it is, Your Worship, and Aaron Sparks and Seth Wright from B C Transit are on today, and I believe Aaron's got a very short presentation for us today to talk about the findings of our last public outreach.
All right, carry on, Aaron, thank you.
Great, thank you very much for having us here today. I am going to share my screen. Do people see a screen that says Transit Future Service Plan?
Yes, we can.
Or my sharing, is it like a start of a presentation kind of looking screen?
Yeah.
All right, it's always fun when you're doing this remotely to make sure you're sharing the right one. All right, so I will get started. There we go, so, um, just to start off with sort of the transit vision, so this Transit Future Service Plan outlines the vision for transit in Revelstoke, so transit uh, is the preferred choice for residents and visitors alike, attracting riders through comfortable, safe, accessible, and convenient service. The priorities in this plan reflect feedback that we received through stakeholder workshops, uh, as well as through public engagement, and these proposals will help to grow ridership by responding to community needs, by providing increased opportunities for Revelstoke residents and visitors alike to explore the city by bus. And I'll just note before I get started, there's numbers up in the top left-hand corner of the screen, and they correspond to the numbers in the full plan, which is in your agenda package, so if it looks like I'm jumping around a little bit, it's just because I've taken some slides out for the sake of time. So moving into transit needs, so service levels in Revelstoke have remained pretty steady in recent years, with the most recent service change occurring in twenty fifteen. There were some minor changes made in twenty twenty, but we, uh, just to some, some routes, but we kept the service levels the same. And as you can see in the map on the right, transit is provided in the most densely populated parts of the city. And I'll note here that the density information that's presented in this map is from the twenty sixteen census, um, just because we weren't able to access the more recent data, but as Revelstoke continues to grow, B C Transit will work with the city to ensure that transit is responding to community development patterns. Just want to touch briefly on system performance, so transit ridership in Revelstoke has remained steady over the past few years, of course, before decreasing due to COVID nineteen, which is what we saw in transit systems across the world. These two charts show ridership at the system level, so annually for fiscal years at the top, and then monthly at the bottom. And I'll just flag that the, the chart at the bottom displays April twenty nineteen to March twenty twenty-one, um, but ridership has continued to grow since, since March twenty twenty-one, that's just where the, the graph ends. So we're not back to a hundred percent of pre-COVID ridership, but it has continued to recover. In terms of public engagement, so, uh, engagement span for one month from January eighth to February eighth, twenty twenty-one. Because of COVID, we conducted our engagement substantially online, but we did have some paper surveys available uh, on request, and so you can see that we did have fourteen people who did, uh, fill out the paper version of the survey. We also held a pre-COVID in-person workshop in February of twenty twenty, which was used to determine the priorities that ultimately were presented to the public during the main phase of engagement. This map shows the future transit network, so with all of the, the new routes and modifications to existing routes that we are proposing in this plan. Um, so it's, there's a lot going on, but there's a, a couple of different items that are highlighted on the left. So the extension of Route Two Columbia Park, the Route, uh, One South Side being split into two separate routes, which I'll talk about in a minute. Uh, a new route just for Arrow Heights, and then, of course, the new Route Six for, uh, Revelstoke Mountain Resort. So I'm going to just quickly highlight a couple of the key proposals in the, in the plan. So this is one of the short-term proposals that we are putting forward, so this would establish a new B C Transit route between downtown Revelstoke and the resort. Through this priority, the existing Everything Revelstoke Shuttle would be assumed by B C Transit. This service will support community growth by providing transit service to Revelstoke Mountain Resort, as well as the surrounding area, as it continues to develop. This priority will provide a link between the city and the resort, connecting residents, residents and visitors to amenities, recreational opportunities, and accommodation. Other short-term priorities which you'll see in the, the full plan include extending Route One to Mount Cartier Court, as well as the introduction of Sunday service and evening service. Moving into some of our longer-term priorities, I'm not going to touch on all these, just highlight a, a couple of them. So the key priorities here are the splitting of Route One South Side into two routes, creating a new route for Arrow Heights, and then also extending the area of coverage on Route One. Uh, and you'll see that the resource requirements are combined for, for those priorities, just because they will be implemented at the same time. And then we also have the extension of Route Two and Route Three. So in terms of investment strategy, to achieve the goals of this plan, capital and operating investments in the transit system will be required over the next five years and beyond. This plan calls for an additional eight thousand one hundred and fifty annual service hours, as well as five additional vehicles. Service improvements will be integrated into our three-year transit improvement process, which is updated on an annual basis and guides how expansions are implemented across B C Transit systems. Through, uh, through this improvement process, the priorities outlined in this plan will be costed and presented in a memorandum of understanding to Revelstoke Council for approval. Once these priorities are approved, we will proceed, uh, with the request to secure provincial funding, uh, the funding that's required to implement these priorities. And I'll just, the other thing I'll maybe say here is that through, through this process, local governments commit financially to their first year of expansions, subject to the confirmation of provincial funding, and then the items that we present for years two and three are presented just for budgeting and planning purposes, and we do recost these items annually. In terms of next steps, uh, we're, we're here just recommending that the city of Revelstoke accept this Transit Future Service Plan to be the guiding document for transit improvement in Revelstoke over the next five to seven years. Uh, and so we can integrate these proposals into our expansion and service change planning process. And so that is it for the presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions. Go to stop sharing. So thank you very much for allowing us to, to speak to you today, and happy to answer any questions.
Good, thank you. I have a couple of questions, just, uh, moving through to going up to our, our. What happens with our existing shuttle buses, are they amalgamated into B C Transit, and what happens now? Mr. Black?
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, quite honestly, I'm not a hundred percent sure what we're going to do with those buses, as they are the, 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 uh, equipment by, uh, the shuttle service itself, um, and as Aaron described, we're looking at bringing in full-size coaches for this, not the smallest vehicles in the B C Transit fleet as, uh, we currently operate. I know the existing buses, I believe, are what, thirty passenger roughly buses, and so we'll be looking for some bigger coaches. Um, I'm not certain, again, what the disposition of those, uh, existing buses that, uh, the shuttle runs, however, we can certainly find that out in the future. The big picture here, uh, council and mayor is that, uh, the equipment, if we're working with B C Transit on this, is B C Transit equipment, and we do benefit from the buying power of the province and all of the equipment, in addition to the, uh, the cost-sharing agreement, so it is a real value to the community. And I believe that, uh, we're on the average of about twenty-five thousand passengers a year on the B C Transit service, and we'll go into the hundreds of thousands of passengers when the combination of these two, um, operations are consolidated. So a very good, um, value to the community in the big picture.
Any other questions from other councillors? Councillor Shawlet?
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Um, sorry, I can't hear the sound there, we're in a weird place. Um. Couple of questions, so for the larger heavy-duty units, uh, can you, I'm not sure if I'm, I'm familiar with which bus you are talking about, and can you just describe a little bit about what kind of equipment, um, passengers would be able to take onboard? So I'm thinking, obviously, for the ski equipment for going to the resort, but then, also in the summertime, one of the, one of the challenges we've had is putting bicycles onboard, um, with the smaller buses, so I'd like to hear what the possibilities are.
Um, Aaron, if I might ask you to, uh, talk to the, uh, equipment that B C Transit would typically use for this sort of, uh, operation, and then I can certainly talk to the, uh, um, recreational equipment that needs to be transported.
Uh, yeah, so with respect to equipment, um, we will be looking to use our heavy duties, so those are our forty-foot buses, to run the, the Revelstoke Mountain Resort service. In terms of storage options, we have in the past explored kind of various options for the storage of skis, snowboards, um, I believe, uh, oh, what is it, uh, surfboards, at, at some point as well, um, and through the, the various explorations that we've done, we don't currently support any internal or external storage options, just because we found that external mounts tend to block with, with our fleet type, the external mounts tend to block emergency exits, so there's a safety concern associated with that. And we don't really have any viable options other than that, and so with our existing, um, services that go to ski hills and other parts of the province right now, passengers do have to take the skis and the snowboards onboard with them, um, just because we don't have any other, um, supported options for, for storage.
Right, okay.
And as far as, uh, bicycles, uh, their bike racks are pretty common on, uh, equipment, and so uh, putting bike racks on the front of vehicles is pretty normal, and there have been used successfully in the Lower Mainland with TransLink, and I'm certain in many other locations that B C Transit operates. And so we can certainly accommodate, uh, the equipment either inside or outside of the buses.
Okay, great, thank you.
Need one of those bike racks that holds like twenty of them hanging off the back of that bus. I think, I like this image already, Aaron, this is going to be cool. Councillor Elliott, have a question.
Um, just, uh, you, thank you, Your Worship Lab. You said the big traditional buses that B C Hydro would be what we would, what would be rolled out here in Revelstoke. Is there any move to electric buses or greener options, uh, that you guys are considering?
Aaron, I, I will defer to you as far as what the, the fleet makeup is looking like in, in B C Transit's future, but I think that the answer is absolutely.
I will subsequently defer to Seth Wright, manager of government relations.
Yeah, through Your Worship to, uh, to Mayor, or to Councillor Elliott, um, we are excited about our battery electric bus project. Uh, B C Transit has ambitious goals to be a totally electric fleet. Uh, within the next decade or so, we're right now doing an engineering assessment of the entire province to identify where, where we want to, uh, put those early adoption buses, um, and the technology is rapidly evolving in the transit world. Uh, the bus type that we're talking about implementing into Revelstoke would be a forty-foot conventional heavy-duty bus. That bus type could be swapped out for a battery electric bus when we have the infrastructure ready in Revelstoke, so I, I can't give you a timeline or, or when that's going to be, but um, we do have a plan, and we're working away with our engineers to, uh, to implement that plan to, uh, electrify our fleet.
Oh, well, Councillor Wright?
Uh, yeah, I mean, a, a forty-foot bus, uh, I mean, we do get a lot of snow, and I'm just wondering how practical to get a lot of people and move them efficiently and, and, and aware with the, you know, we get a big snowfall. Well, I guess you've done it in Worcester, but, uh, they might have a better plowing program, I, I don't know, but, uh, it's a concern for, concern for us. If a, a big bus doesn't, doesn't, it's not that mobile, and it's not, uh, maybe our streets are not designed effectively for it.
I think they're going to be much bigger than what we've got now, because another ten feet, but you get ten feet and another ten people on there. That should weigh it down enough that they can get through the snow, and if not, you've got forty people or fifty people on there that can push. Anyway, Councillor Shawlet, you have a question. Sorry, Rob.
Yes, uh, thank you, Worship. So following up on that, then, with the battery buses, that's exciting to see that continuing on. I remember seeing at the transit workshop, um, in Kamloops before the pandemic hit, uh, some of the visioning and ideas of what was coming for B C Transit, so it's exciting to see that coming into fruition. Um, you mentioned infrastructure for those battery buses, and I imagine with the pilot projects that you were talking about, you're figuring out what that, those infrastructure needs are. Um, I'm asking, I'm curious as to what you do know so far, because one of the questions with our transit system is uh, whether we continue to use Grizzly Plaza as the, uh, hub and switching spot for the buses. So I'm curious as to how those big buses will fit through there, and what information we can take back to uh, another committee we have going on right now, we're meeting next week for the Grizzly Plaza revitalization. Um, so we're looking at shifting, to make the space more functional, and I'm really curious to hear from B C Transit's point of view, is how does the functionality of the plaza fit in now and in the future?
If I, if I may, councillor, uh, through Your Worship, um, we are, we have not yet determined what the final configuration of the route would look like. Um, there is going to be some concerns with large equipment using Grizzly Plaza in the future, and perhaps, um, having given a little bit of thought to this, that, um, the southbound route would be on Victoria, because the bus doors would open on the sidewalk side, um, versus coming up Victoria northbound, which would put people over by the tracks and not a very safe place to drop. So we'll have to figure out the northbound route, and that may be First Street bypassing the plaza itself, and then we could be dropping people, um, in a, in a urban area with sidewalks and, and, uh, place, safe places to be dropped and picked up. Um, however, again, we have not figured out the, the full detail of that, and obviously, the configuration of Grizzly Plaza will play into those discussions in the future. Um, I know that our operator of the shuttle has, um, played with some timing and, um, uh, operations, uh, theoretical operation of a system using Grizzly Plaza as the center of, uh, the universe, so as I, as we could say. And, um, with two buses traveling eat, um, in opposite directions, but meeting at Grizzly Plaza, he believes that we can operate a pretty efficient system that, uh, um, would not require significant new hours above and beyond the combination of the shuttle and the transit system. But again, preliminary looks at these things, and, um, I think the, the key walk away from my perspective to council and the community is that, um, we're, we're acknowledging the combination of the systems is going to be a benefit to the community, and I believe I've been talking to this for a few years, and it's nice to see that the community is coming to the same place as, um, staff. And, um, it's very exciting for us to look at going from a sys, very, very small system to a system that is significantly larger with significant benefit in operations and significant ridership, which is, I think, a goal of, uh, at least for what I've been hearing from council in my time here, is is a very important aspect, um, not to be having so many empty buses running around, but to have a, a fleet that's utilized at a high, much higher level.
Well, then, then Councillor Ryan.
Uh, thank you, Steve, uh, and, uh, Aaron, uh, just a question on, uh, I know the vision was, i- is pretty grand about the increasing the ridership, what kind of strategy do you have in place to, to, to make that happen? Uh, I mean, the dollar speaks, and people have to have some kind of incentive to really get on the bus. Uh, that's, that's the reality, I mean, do we need to start thinking about charging for parking and, uh, increasing road taxes and those type of things to make ridership, uh, uh, to attain the vision that you have in place?
Um, through Your Worship to Councillor Elliott, um, uh, carrots and sticks are, are obviously the very important aspects of any successful transit system, parking system, um, mode shift that I think we're all looking for in the, in the long term and the future, um, the transportation master plan, and, and I know that the council's probably tires of hearing us talk of, of the transportation master plan, but, um, these tools and policies and the, um, guidance that these documents provide will give us some of those tools to help facilitate those mode shifts. And many of those mode shifts are, uh, uh, come about by restricting parking, um, making it more difficult to drive to the, to the hill and, and prioritizing transit service or active modes of trans, transportation beyond the car, and knowing that the community, at least at this point in time, I believe, does not support expanding the road network to four lanes to the resort. Um, it's going to be absolutely critical that we, um, find the mode shift and give, given the, the carrots and sticks to encourage that change in ridership, and so it's going to take some time. Um, but it's the, it's, I think, a very good vision for the future of the community to, um, not dedicate more space to asphalt and roads, but to create the opportunity for people to get out of their car, go have a beer after skiing, and get on the bus, and go back to their hotel or come downtown for dinner. I think it's a really good plan, and, 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 um, now we have to, to be creative and succeed in implementing it. So it's going to take some time again, but we're, we're starting down that path. And I'm very pleased to see that we're here, and I hope council also is, uh, supportive of, of the path we're trying to find for our future.
And to you, Sir.
Yeah.
Come back to your council.
It's on the same vein as, as your thoughts, uh, Councillor Elliott, but, um, this is all really exciting to see this new, uh, updated plan, and I'm curious when in this discussion we should be talking about those incentives, like free ridership for children or seniors, or, you know, at what point, um, should we be having that discussion, and also the timeline of this game plan, what is this, two questions?
Uh, well, the, the, uh, through Your Worship, uh, to Councillor Ryan, uh, I would like to see us implement this as quickly as we can, um, the combination of the systems, um, the, the operating costs are going to come out of that combined system, and the A O A that you see on a regular basis, on an annual basis, the operating agreement. Um, and then, as we understand the, the implications of cost for O N M, for the new equipment, um, charging stations, et cetera, et cetera. Council will have every opportunity to help direct, um, staff as to what things should be free and at what, uh, what level, um, including children, um, and we have, uh, in, in conclusion, we have also prepared a letter to send to Transit to say, hey, we're ready to start this process, and, um, we'll see what all of the paperwork and M O Us and agreements look like, because I think this will be the, one of the first combined systems like this. Uh, and so how it looks and what it looks like in the, will take some time to, to figure out.
Yeah, just a follow-up comment, um, it's just that, yeah, that, that sounds great, and I, uh, it would just be really exciting, I think, to have some big, even if it's not permanent, but at the beginning, to change the habits and to encourage ridership, um, some incentives like a program where it's free for seniors or kids for the first year or whatever, um, just while that transition is happening.
Councillor Elliott, I'll come back to you.
Oh, Jackie, uh, mentioning the free ridership, uh, I think that's been on, been discussed many times, but, uh, you know, the, the thinking for me is that, uh, if we can save money on roads, uh, by less traffic and less paving, and, uh, I'd put it into a transportation network that sort of moves people conveniently and, uh, in comfort. I think those types, that type of thing, that, that discussion can be had, you know, we can take money from one pot and put it into a, a, a green, uh, you know, a, a convenient, uh, uh, something that's good for our community, that's what we need to do. Uh, and I think we should be, be all for it, so I can, I can say that.
Right, do you have a comment?
Seth?
Seth, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to offer that, um, that the B C government across the entire B C Transit network of systems offer, introduced a program just, uh, about six months ago for free transit for children twelve and under. And so this is, uh, offset with some provincial funding that the, that the province sent out, and we had each, uh, each local government sign a, sign a letter saying, I'm willing to take this money, and that money really, at the end of the day, more than offsets the costs here, or the lost revenue from, from children riding the bus, and so, um, so we have that system, and the province has indicated that they want to maintain that, uh, into the long foreseeable, long-term, uh, going forward, because it's, uh, been pretty widely acclaimed to success, successful program.
And it also, uh, creates new riders at a young age, and so it becomes something that is, uh, normalized and not something unique.
Councillor Elliott, follow up?
I would, yeah, I, I agree, they, under twelve, uh, would be great, but I, I would suggest that looking at the riders on our bus system currently, there are no, it's rare that anyone under twelve is on the thing. It, it, that's not saying never, but, uh, the majority of our riders are not in that age group, and, uh, uh, you know, you, you mentioned that the, we've had a steady, uh, prior to COVID, we had a steady number on, on our transportation users. But I, I, I don't think it's a, a broad swath of our, our, our population, it's a pretty narrow group that use it, so, uh, I, I, I I think that, that's, if you want to reach a lot more people, you've got to make it easy to get on, you got to make it, just, just jump on, park my car, and I can save, save some money, and it's just a simple process to go through and not, I think it's just a, uh, maybe it's a bit novel, opening the door to everybody, but I think we can be novel, we can, we can make, we can define our, we can design our own system.
Councillor Meyer and Mr. White?
Uh, thank you, Worship, and to, to Councillor Elliott, we'll certainly consider, um, the, this discussion in, in our future. Um, um, planning for, for consolidating the systems and, and encouraging that, uh, mode shift and increase in ridership. Um, as I said, I'm very excited to, to be able to state today that we're looking at combining the systems, and I'm very pleased that, uh, our partners in crime in this, uh, area, B C Transit, and, and, uh, everything Revelstoke, their shuttle drivers are, uh, also keen and seeing us succeed in this way. Uh, it's very nice to have a, a partnership and, and something like this, it's a big program, it's dynamic, and the, um, opportunity is, is huge. Um, so I'm very pleased that, that we're here today, um, and able to provide this, um, updated document for your consideration, thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, any questions or concerns or comments from council?
Sorry, I have one more, Gary. Uh, just on the school bus, ha, ha, has the school board been incorporated into your, your, your discussions? Uh, we have a, a school board, a school bus fleet that continues to go roll through town as well. Uh, has that been absorbed into your, into your, into your evaluation?
It has not, and, um, my understanding is, and, and I know, um, operationally, um, and, and perhaps I'm not the best. best one to answer this question, but my experience in other communities is that, except for high school students, typically all of the grade school, the middle school are always on their own bus systems. And the school has to maintain those buses to a different standard. And so they have their own equipment and their own mechanics for that very purpose. Now, that doesn't mean that we can look at, in an opportunity there, or at least discuss that with the school district, but certainly things that we can also ask and, and consider in our future planning.
I just think in Vancouver or major centers, kids are on the bus going to school. So I, I don't know if it's that much of a stretch to, I mean, certain areas need the, you know, way out there that come into our center would need a separate bus system. But I don't know, it might be something to consider.
Thank you. We will certainly take that into consideration.
Any other questions or concerns? So none. Thank you, Aaron and Seth. I appreciate you coming and doing the presentation. Much appreciated. All right. We are going to move on to nine A, Transit Service Plan. So Mr. White, I'll keep you from our, our presentation.
I'm like, through your worship, the presentation that we just walked through is basically a summary of the, the long-term transit plan. And should council have any additional questions on the, the report that Aaron did a presentation on, I can certainly provide some more answers and/or Seth and/or Aaron if need be. Otherwise, I think we've had a, a pretty robust discussion on, during the presentation on this same report.
Great. Thank you. So I'll ask one last time. Any other comments from council? So none. All right. We're going to move on. Thank you. Appreciate that. We're going to move on now to item nine B, short-term rental draft policies. So Mr. Simon, you're here. Want to do a bit of a presentation before we do a presentation to kind of bring council out with speed on this policy.
Thank you, your worship. I can give a brief overview of the policy. Essentially, this is a policy the staff are proposing to help guide the implementation of the recently adopted short-term rental zoning amendments, as well as the currently pending business license, MTI and fees and charges by law amendments. So in a nutshell, this policy is seeking to do three things. Provide further guidance to staff for applications that are seeking to still go through the spot zoning process, or for applications that are seeking to pursue a comprehensive development zone or propose a new standard zone to accommodate short-term rentals. Staff can't ultimately refuse to accept an application, but this would make very clear for applicants, the, the idea that the city is not supportive of any further spot zoning applications at this time, as we're trying to get a handle on short-term rentals and start commencing enforcement on illegal operations. It would also include provisions for when we would consider potential expansion of the area. So this has been a topic of discussion at council table. And this basically would give direction to staff and it's important because it gives it to us in writing so that we have to follow up on it within 18 months from the adoption of this policy, to ultimately bring a report back to council to give a status update. And I'm sure there will be reports before that, but this formalizes it to try and explain to council and the community about how the short-term rental regulations are currently working, whether or not there's been any issues concerning them. And if there's a need for any changes at that time, then staff would outline that in a report with associated recommendations. And then lastly, and importantly, to not only ensure a transparent and clear approach for the community with respect to enforcement, but also for staff and council to have that clear, consistent message, outlining the process at a, a higher level that would be undertaken with respect to pursuing enforcement. So it reaffirms council's previous direction to pursue both a proactive and a reactive enforcement policy with respect to short-term rentals. And it also includes some very specific dates in there. So up until July 31st, 2022, that would give us roughly a three-month grace period for people to be, you know, informed of the new regulations, come in, ask development services, staff, any questions they have about how to come into compliance. And this is important because it's something that's been communicated, I think, throughout the short-term rental discussion, that there was going to be this grace period for existing operators to explore opportunities on how they can come into compliance without seeing immediate ticketing being the only option. And then after July 31st, this is when we would move into the standard enforcement approach, where staff would basically be taking a two-pronged approach. The first step would be providing formal written notice for anyone who was operating a business without a valid business license. And that would be used, both, that would be done not only by see click fix for that reactive form of enforcement, but as well through the use of the software likely host compliance to cross-reference our business license database with the postings of short-term rentals throughout the community to determine which ones are operating without a business license. So they would get the formal written notice, be given a specified time period to come in and apply for a business license. If they do not apply for a business license by that time, then the file would be passed to enforcement for further action, which would include but not be limited to issuance of tickets. And one of the key things that we've put in here, again, just to provide that greater clarity, is that should someone apply for a business license, as an example, someone applies for a bed and breakfast business license, staff determine you're actually looking to operate a short-term rental, you're not allowed to operate a short-term rental and that business license is not issued. If they are still caught advertising after knowing that they are not permitted to operate that type of business, then staff would be able to skip that first step of issuing written notice and proceed directly to enforcement so that we have an expedited approach for those operators that are, I guess, a little bit more challenging to be brought into compliance. So those are the three things that the policy is attempting to ultimately accomplish. And we are looking to ultimately have this in place to coincide with adoption and administration of the short-term rental policies, because we do anticipate, you know, as we start to roll this out, there will be those that will come in and seek to make applications for spot zoning. There will be those that are looking to submit applications immediately for bed and breakfast and other short-term rental uses as well. So it's really important that we have some direction outlined that we can not only point to people, but staff can also use and rely upon to ultimately enforce and administer the short-term rental regulations in a clear, consistent manner.
Okay. Thank you. So I have one question just to really under the policy directives. Item number one, about the resort fringe land use designation may be considered for rezoning. So with the people that are in what we call that resort fringe now, are they allowed to operate short-term rentals? I was understanding that kind of from, from Nickel Road South was a zone that basically was open for short-term rentals. Could you just clarify that for me, Mr. Simon?
Well, definitely to your worship and all of council. So the resort fringe land use designation was recently adopted by council, I believe it was by law 2298. And that gave a land use designation to the Thomas Brook community that previously had held the CSRD land use designation since the time it was incorporated into the city. And that land use designation ingrains rights within the O C P that it may be supported to be used for tourist accommodation. Staff are currently working with the first applicant on a zone that would be suitable under that to resort fringe land use designation to support different forms of tourist accommodation, one of them being short-term rental. So we just wanted to make clear in the policy that there wasn't any contradiction with that expectation that is ingrained in the development abilities under that resort fringe land use designation.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments from council, councillor Ryan?
Yeah. Should spot zoning fees, do you think be, or rezoning, I suppose, fees be increased so that it is more of a deterrent to those people who, who want to do the spot zoning thing? Like, what are your thoughts on how we avoid getting into the same situation we were in, in 2016?
Through your worship, councillor Ryan, that's a, that's a very good question. There's a couple key points I think that we need to consider. And planning and development services have had some chats with corporate services as well, because when we got to craft bylaws, there's a lot of groups that start to get involved in it. And it does take staff time, like you're saying. So a couple of things that we need to ultimately consider is, I think it's important that we have a clear policy and that council is, is strong on not really supporting spot zoning applications that would undermine the, the potential intent that we've tried to pass with the recent short-term rental amendments. And then secondly, as well, the way that staff kind of envision it is, should someone want to make an application for spot zoning, we would bring the application immediately to council. That applicant would be able to provide a letter indicating why they believe that their application has merit and it should be brought forward. And we would be, staff essentially would recommend that the application be denied in accordance with council policy. And then if council saw fit to move the application forward, that's when we would start to move into drafting bylaws, preparing public hearings to minimize the impact on staff resources. Now that said, with respect to fees and charges, it would all be wrapped up under the current charge, which I believe is about $2,500 for rezoning, $2,000 somewhere in there. I think that if it was increased substantially, and the process that staff are looking to administer to make it the least resource intensive process possible, I don't know if it would be necessary to increase the fees, because again, we have to, we have to do it on a cost recovery basis, right? So if we increase them too much as a deterrent, then we're getting away from that cost recovery discussion.
So would they have to pay the fee just to have it come forward to council for that initial review?
Through your worship, yes, they would. They would, they would need to submit a full rezoning application. What we're trying to get away from is having substantial amounts of staff time dedicated to completing a full review, referring out these applications, having our corporate services team draft bylaws towards them, and trying to find a clear, simplified manner of bringing them forward for council consideration early, so that staff don't complete all the work only to have it, you know, potentially denied at the end.
Yeah, no, that makes a lot of sense. I have another question. So the, if, if I have suggestions for that operator guidebook, should I talk about those in this discussion?
Through your worship, the materials that we provided as the guidebook, you know, these are, they're materials that staff would generally prepare kind of behind the scenes to help implement all this, not typically something that would go to council, but just because there's been so much discussion on short-term rental, we wanted to make clear to council that we were ready to implement this. And we also wanted to get it out in the public so that people can start to look at some of the information that will be relevant for their applications. I think if there's any feedback, and your worship, you can correct me if I'm wrong, or the corporate officer can, I think getting in touch with the city's corporate services group that can then relay that message to planning staff. So again, we're always, we, we want to hear any suggestions you have to incorporate into those guidebooks. And if there's typos or anything in there, most definitely let us know, and we can get all that fixed. But it's not really something that needs a council decision. So I think that there's different avenues by which we can get feedback and get embedded.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, I guess it's more of a just staff document to help the public. I just think there's a few like word choices that could be substituted, but I'm happy to put that in an email and send it to staff. I had another question about the situation where you have a neighbor who's not happy with the next room neighbor. And let's just say that, for example, there were a lot of in and out cars, but this person wasn't advertising on any sort of platform. Then in my understanding of this current rule, it would be a reactive process where the neighbor could submit a complaint. But then like at, at what point, like, how does staff handle that if they're just a bunch of complaints? Do you know what I'm saying?
Through your worship, councillor Ryan, that's a, that's a very good question. And so what I'm, what I'm hearing is if we have someone who's kind of flying under the radar and getting around all of our technology and software programs, we have to try and track and monitor this stuff. We got to see click fix complaints saying, hey, this person's operating a business, they're not showing up on host compliance. Is, is that, am I kind of understanding the context correctly? So in, in that situation, our bylaw enforcement group would, you know, begin an investigation to determine whether or not there is any illegal activity occurring there. One of the biggest things that we've been trying to promote from, you know, the planning and development services side, in terms of compliance with bylaws, is being open and accessible for the community. And we really always advocate for trying to make initial contact should there ever be an issue that arises, to not only understand both sides, because we also understand, and the bylaw enforcement officers can speak to this better than I can, but that sometimes there is a desire to pull city staff into potential neighbor disputes. And there may be situations where things are exaggerated on one side or the other. And it's, it's challenging for staff to obviously deal with those situations in a way that resolves it to the satisfaction of both parties. But it would be something that would require further investigation and hopefully an opportunity for some education with both parties to make sure everyone's clear on what the bylaws are. And it's very important too, that people understand, just because you're not advertising your business, if you're operating a business without a business license, that's still a violation of the business license by law.
Yeah. Okay, great. Yeah, I guess I'm just liking that part you just mentioned about bylaws sort of roping in staff and it becoming this complicated process. I'm, I'm concerned that that might happen where there are these like neighborly disputes, or if it's like someone new to town or whatever, and then they have like visitors that are just their friends, but then, you know, the neighborhood is like concerned that there's a short-term rental. It's like, how far down that rabbit hole is that going to take staff to try and figure out? Or by law, I suppose. Yeah, I just, I, I, I know it's not a council issue, but if it ends up eating a lot of staff resourcing, then it, then it does become an issue for council.
And through your worship, that's a good point. And I know our bylaw group, they're pretty good at deciphering when something is a valid concern or when it's not a valid concern. That's why I think it's so important, you know, as we move to implement these short-term rental regulations, having clear, consistent communication between staff and council to report back to indicate how this is going. Is it eating too much of staff's time? Do we need to have a discussion about resource and capacity and how we're administering these? It needs to be a fluent conversation where that type of data and information is freely exchanged back and forth.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions from council regarding the draft policy? Councillor Brooks Hill?
I have a comment and a question. I'm supportive of this policy. I think it's well drafted and well balanced. I had another comment, but I forgot it. But the question for Mr. Simon, I'm just curious how, you know, are we getting a lot of people inquiring about business life, business licenses and bed and breakfast? That's like a lot, a lot, or quite a bit?
Through your worship, councillor Brooks Hill, we are getting several inquiries about it. People are obviously interested and concerned about how it potentially impacts them. We've begun the process of reaching out to everyone who has an application for spot zoning that's on hold to get their desires, how they want to move forward with their application. So it is something that is, you know, taking up a little bit of time. And staff do expect that, you know, this isn't something that's going to be cleaned up within a month or two months. It's going to be a multi-month process to not only educate the public, educate operators, but also, you know, get the software and start to follow up with everyone that doesn't have a valid business license. So we are seeing a little bit of an uptick in inquiries. We anticipate that to continue to increase. I think that we will get to the point, staff hope sooner rather than later, that it will plateau. And then we start to get a handle on the, on the problem and start to solve some of those problems. And then it starts to dip down and it takes up less and less staff time. And our conversations with other municipalities, implementing the regulations, you usually get a spike of inquiries, applications, licenses. There's a, a learning curve that you have to go through for the, both the public and staff to administer the new regulations. But then it does ultimately plateau and drop off once we get a handle on it. So that's what we're hoping the case is. But again, this comes back to having that clear communication between staff and council. And if it's something where our bylaw enforcement group, for instance, is completely overwhelmed with illegal operators, it's really important, in my view, that staff are communicating that to council so that we're, we're staffed up accordingly and resourced accordingly and look at what options we have for that.
All right. Thank you, councillor.
On Tuesday, we discussed briefly the fee for bed and breakfast, which is $50, and the proposed short-term rental fee, which is 500. Can we discuss that here? Like when?
Yeah, we're going into the council meeting after this and it's on the agenda.
Okay, never mind.
All right. Any other comments regarding this policy? Councillor Elliot?
Maybe I'm, I'm just looking for a bit of background. We have roughly 70 official vacation rentals that, that were through the spot zoning process. Is that right? Yeah, go ahead.
Through your worship, I believe there's about 40, and then we have 11 on hold. I'd have to double check the numbers. I know they're in one of the previous staff reports.
So that was through the previous system where they would spot, spot zone application, they had to go through that process. And then there's 200 or 300 at the resort in that. two or three hundred at the resort in that resort fringe area. Is that what I understand?
Uh, at the resort, they have, trying to recall exactly how many they have at the Sutton Place and then Monashant McKenzie. Um, well over a hundred and then with McKenzie Village, forty-six units in phase one, a hundred and twenty-one in phase two and three. I believe the numbers in the staff report from January showed um, units that were either constructed or in the process of securing approvals to be constructed, about five hundred and thirty um, would be viable legal short-term rental businesses. And when we are looking during peak season, we're hitting that two seventy to three hundred, uh, short-term rentals are being advertised right now.
And then the Thomas Brook area, that's another group of, of homes that are eligible for short-term rentals.
Correct. That would be twenty-three properties.
Okay, okay. So, so, so a- and, and those entities, uh, i- if there's a complaint or if there's a problem, what is, what is the stick that we have? We, do we have any way to enforce, uh, if there's a problem, you lose your license or, or, or how, how does that, what do we have in, in place and what do we hope to put in place?
Uh, through your worship, the municipal ticketing information bylaw is very important. Uh, it's a very important piece of this. And again, with the bylaw enforcement group, and I, I won't speak too much about how they do their job, you know, the city, um, you know, ticketing is, is not often the, the first approach, depending on the severity of the situation, but it's an important tool to have. And the way that the MTI bylaw needs to be crafted is to ensure that each, uh, offense is a separate offense and a separate ticketable offense. So that it could be a fine of five hundred to a thousand dollars per offense per day that the offense continues. And to have that big stick, it doesn't mean you have to use it one hundred percent of the time. But to be able to say to an operator, we've counted five violations of our business license and zoning bylaw regulations upon initial review, and that equates to a fine of five thousand dollars per day that the offenses continue. Then you start to see someone, you know, pretty quickly wanting to come into compliance when they realize after three or four days, they're going to be looking at a a maximum of a fifteen or twenty thousand dollar fine. So that's a very important piece to this. And the MTI bylaw did receive second reading on Tuesday. And, uh, I know there will be a discussion after, um, committee of the hold today at the council meeting to consider third reading for it. So staff are confident that we have enough leverage to make the potential penalties outweigh the benefits of operating a short-term rental illegally. Um, but that is a very important piece to the puzzle.
All of Counselor?
Uh, and just o- o- on the new spot zoning, uh, entities that are interested. So we'd have to go through a rezoning process for those char- uh, those, those, those concerns.
Uh, through your worship, yes, if you are not located within an area where you are permitted to operate a short-term rental. So if you're in Columbia Park and you're zoned R two and you want to operate a short-term rental, the only option you would have is to go through the spot zoning process, which again, it's very important in this policy that we make clear that we're, we're not supportive of that right now. Um, it not only helps expedite things for staff, but it makes it very, very clear to, to the community and applicants. I'm sure there will be some situations where, you know, council could deem it to have merit. But it's, it's important for staff that we don't have, um, you know, I, I know when the spot zoning process was going strong, I think they were dealing with sixty-five rezoning applications a year coming in, which is quite a drain on staff time.
But when we do say in eighteen months, when we're opening the door for new people, we're, we're going to reevaluate our, our bylaw, we still have, would we amend the, uh, rezoning application fee? I mean, you, you suggested three, four thousand dollars might be a, a target for a rezoning application. Um, or two, three thousand dollars for a rezoning application. Uh, what about in eighteen months' time, are we going to reconsider, look at that as a, as a, I mean, I'm trying to make some equity in our community. So people have already got you know, the pathway through without paying any significant fee. Anyone else has to pay that fee. So I, I just want to make sure that we're, we're considering that.
Uh, most definitely. And through your worship, I think that the discussion of the fees and charges for rezoning applications in general is something that, that will have to come to the forefront at some point in time. Right now, our current fees in my, uh, in my professional opinion are, are quite low compared to the staff time that it takes to get a rezoning application through the process. Um, especially when we start getting into complex rezoning applications. But I think that that's a, that's a broader discussion as part of future fees and charges by law amendments to ensure that the charges that we're um, we're putting in our fees and charges by law are reflective of cost recovery principles.
Yeah, I just, it's, it's a burden on the future guys, not the guys that are currently, uh, uh, allowed to do it. Uh, and then one more question, uh, when, when we, uh, one of the, when we had our public forum, I think, uh, one suggestion that came up was about, uh, like, uh, once you have your approval for the, uh, short-term rentals, it wasn't, uh, in perpetuity, like a, like a three-year term was suggested or a couple of options on a narrow window when you you could have this license, eligible for the license. And then you had to reapply down the road. If, if after three-year term or after a certain term, you would reopen the, the dialogue. Uh, I'm just wondering if that's something we should be looking at as well.
Uh, so through your worship, uh, business licenses need to be renewed annually. So they do have to come in and make a renewal application every year. But I, I think if I'm recalling correctly, what you're referring to is this discussion of temporary use permits, which is how some municipalities have tried to deal with the short-term rental issue where you can apply for a temporary use permit for a period of three years. And then it can be renewed for another period of three years. And then after that process is done, you may apply for a permanent zone change to accommodate that use. Um, there are some municipalities that have gone that road. That's the approach that they take for the comprehensive management of short-term rentals. Whereas our approach was, you know, a little bit different where we said, what areas are suitable for this use? Let's allow it as a use in those areas and try to get a handle on it and, and stop um, allowing it to be dispersed throughout the community and let's try and centralize it adjacent to resort operations and and other existing areas like McKenzie Village that permit short-term rentals. So I think that's a separate conversation, putting term limits on it.
Well, I, I think it was more, uh, in a neighborhood that's allowable, say the resort fringe, uh, one house has got the vacation rental, he's got the license for it and, uh, the next door neighbor is equal, equal to it, but he hasn't got a license, does he? Yeah, that, you know, what are his options? If he, if, if the street then becomes a, a uh, continuum of vacation rentals, we're talking neighborhood, sort of a, a different neighborhood. But I mean, having someone to have it for three years and then it goes to an open competition, you, you, the next person might have the opportunity to, to take on, on the license for that. You know, rather than have ten vacation homes on the street, rather, you can, you might limit it to one or two.
Uh, through your worship, that does start to become a bit of a, a challenging process to administer. Um, you know, the way that we've approached this is trying to make it a little bit more simple where you got to be zoned to permit the use. And if you're not zoned to permit the use, then, you know, here's an option, you can go through a spot zoning process. Um, but I think what you're referring to is, um, what Counselor Ryan had brought up at one of the meetings about regulating it based on a maximum number per block. Which is, it's, uh, that's a bit of a different conversation, I think. And and that's something that would have had to be considered as part of zoning amendments to be, uh, you know, regulated through that manner.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, Counselor Ryan, you have another question?
Yeah, there's one last one about, um, a situation I'm sure you've already thought about, Paul, but, um, or sorry, Mr. Simon. Um, so let's say there was a vacation rental company and they had a bunch of properties that operate short-term rentals. And they rent them out for the season, like with some long-term agreement. And then they go off and find short-term stays for properties. Then how does that work? Cause they're like, well, I'm only renting it to so-and-so vacation rental properties. How can you, like, like, how does the city? What is the recourse there to make sure that that doesn't happen?
So through your worship, Counselor Ryan, just so I'm understanding the question correctly, if someone um, is trying to say that I'm renting it to a vacation rental company and then that vacation rental company is almost subleasing it to different tenants that are coming. So, uh, again, we would look back to intent, right? So your intent is to operate it on a short-term basis and the occupants are coming in for a period of less than thirty days. It's a short-term rental and you need to abide by the regulations. Some of the regulations, depending on what your zoning is, require permanent resident onsite operator. Some of them allow whole hu- whole home rentals with twenty-four seven property management services. Um, they would still be subject to the same rules and regulations.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Palmer?
Uh, thank you, Marisol. Um, uh, my first question, I guess, is on I'll go on the enforcement stuff. So the complaint-based part of the policy. Um, and I know this went through council already, so that's the, uh, the, uh, reactive approach to enforcement. And I guess my concern with that is uh, just how big that could be and, and just the complexity. Um, I'm wondering, I guess, more for council whether you know, there might be a, uh, my, my preference would be that it'd be more focused so that it's not just on the complaint basis because I could just see that it'd be just an overwhelming thing and, uh, and then we lose the focus, focused in enforcement. Uh, that proactive approach. So that's, I guess, one concern I have. I don't know if there's an answer, Paul or Mr. Simon. We've talked about that a little bit before and, uh, that's one that I have concern because we uh, that could have budget implications as to just capacity for bylaw enforcement.
Do you want to answer for that before you carry on?
Uh, that's, I think it's just a statement. I think, yeah, more than anything. Um, I, I'm thinking it, it's probably more of a question for council as a policy item, uh, where, where that goes. Uh, the second is on the, my next question or comment question. Yeah, it's not a question. It's a position, I guess, is on the timelines of the grace period. You have July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, approximately three months. Um, uh, assuming this gets through this, this, uh, in April. Um, so I guess due to council, I'm thinking that a six-month period is probably more appropriate. This is pretty, uh, it, it's aggressive and maybe it needs to be aggressive. But I, again, sort of the capacity thing and sort of getting our ducks together, I, I my inclination is that that would be, uh, October thirtieth. Um, so that's a comment, I guess. Um, now, the next one, I guess, is maybe a little bit more of a question because maybe, uh, Mr. Simon, it's in the policy again. Number seven is you have that date, July thirty-first of the education-based approach. Number eight, it says enforcement, but there's a a formal written notice in a specified period, which is not specified in the policy. And so maybe I'm going to be contradicting myself a little bit on that longer period because if it was specified, uh, because it's, it's sort of a stepping stone, I guess. So there's this very non-enforcement uh, process for the three months in the proposed policy. And then it goes into this next thing. Well, we're going to give you a letter warning that you have in whatever that specified period, which is not specified. I- in, in maybe it's a, a thought about that as, as a policy item specifying that they're given three months as a written notification for enforcement. And that might capture my concerns on the, the other piece.
So can I ask, can I ask Mr. Simon for a comment on that, Counselor? So, uh, just, just any comment on that, Mr. Simon, regarding if we stayed with the same date of of July thirty-first and then we actually put in that period of time where people had, uh, they got their, their warning, they have to comply within three months. Are we overstating that time period? Or is that going to be something, uh, maybe a prudent choice for people to be able to come into compliance? But also give a bit of time for bylaw and for planning. Can you make a comment on that, please?
Uh, through your worship, uh, to all of council, I guess. If there is a, a desire of council to extend the grace period from July thirty-first to October thirty-first, that is most definitely a, a decision that council could make and it's a pretty easy amendment to the policy. With respect to that date that's currently written after August first, here's the process. That would be the process that would guide us into the foreseeable future. Um, from staff's perspective, if the, if council's desires to put a specified period in there, I think three months is too long. I think it's really important that we would tighten that up as much as possible and give people, you know, what we would envision as probably a maximum of two to three weeks, something within that window. Because again, what we're asking is that people come in and apply for a license. Once you apply for a license, you start to fall within that area that you're being brought into compliance. Compliance isn't something that you know, can generally happen overnight. It can be a process that you need to go through. All of individuals that will apply for a business license. Um, and then upon inspection from the city, they require a building permit to do some renovations, right? So, so it will be a process of being brought into compliance. So if the, if council's desires to extend that that grace period, uh, my recommendation would be that it's on the front end of the process to have that education-based period be a little bit longer. Um, our concern from staff's side of six months is that we're starting to get into busy peak tourist time by the end of October into November, December. And we'd really, really like to have a handle on this as much as possible and start getting the word out uh, as soon as possible and using host compliance to start to flag those properties that are non-compliant. So that the workload is, uh, hopefully diminished once we get into peak ski season next year. Um, but most definitely, my, my, my opinion would be that if we're going to extend it, I think extending it on the front end rather than the back end is most appropriate.
Great. Thank you for that comment. So Counselor Palmer, I'll come back to you. Uh, do you want to make that recommendation, uh, with this policy at this point?
I, I just wanted to raise, raise the thing. I think it's a fairly easy thing and, you know, maybe other counselors have a position on this point, but I'm not adding it. It's just a, a thought.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Um, so my next, um, uh, question somewhat unrelated, but it's, it's related to this whole, uh, vacation rental suite thing. So I've asked this question before, but I'm going to ask it again. In order to have a vacation rental under the bylaw, you first need to have a suite. Is that correct?
Uh, through your worship, Counselor Palmer, it depends. Depends on what your zoning is. And this is the challenge that we've had, I think, throughout the process is between all of the CD zones that permit short-term rental, between the spot zone properties, expanding it to the downtown and expanding it to, um, you know, this, these fifty-nine properties along Hay Road. The rules are slightly different, which is why in those supporting documents that staff had provided on Tuesday, you'll see in the, I believe it's in the fact sheet, there's a table in there that basically says if you're zoned to this, here's what your short-term rental rules are. So there are zones that permit whole home rentals. And then there are zones where you need to be a permanent resident onsite operator where that secondary suite is mandatory.
Okay. Um, thank you. That's helpful. Um, one of, one of the, you know, it was difficult for council to finally come to a position of, uh, getting the, the bylaw in place. And one of the challenges was weighing out the need of vacation rentals for various reasons. Uh, as opposed to, uh, and one of the issues was on, um, long-term rentals, so suites that, uh, uh, that are for workers or whatever people. Um, and so in the, in the vacation, if a person has a vacation rental license in a, a building, a dwelling that required the, um, a suite, a secondary suite. So in that particular situation, will the, will the person be able to use to choose a vacation rental or long-term rental or a combination of both?
Mr. Simon?
Uh, through your worship, just so I'm understanding the question correctly. If someone has a, a single family dwelling with a secondary suite and they're zoned for short-term rental, um, are they able to alternate back and forth if they say, okay, I'm operating a, a short-term rental for a little bit? Uh, you know what? Not working out too well. I want to transition to a long-term renter. Are they able to do that?
Yeah, that's, that, that's part of the question anyway, yes.
Uh, through your worship, yes, they are able to do that. They would just need an update to their business license.
Okay, then, this is, uh, uh, these are leading questions to more into the policy. Uh, the for those areas that you have a, a secondary suite that is not permitted a vacation rental. Um, but you're allowed to have a secondary suite, so that's month-by-month rentals. Um, are they required to have a business license?
Uh, through your worship, yes, they're required to have a, um, a secondary suite business license.
Okay, so in that case, um, again, it's related to the policy. So in the case where they're not allowed a vacation rental, but they're allowed month-by-month, they have a business license. They advertise on one of the platforms and it's clear the intent and the advertising is for a month-by-month rental, then they are able to do that.
Uh, through worship, yes, you're able to advertise on a, on an online platform. uh for long term rental. You do see people doing that. I would say it's not as frequent as the short term rental. The platforms really are built for short term rentals, but it is something that's
Yeah, and I and yeah, so I I think it's a mind you it's if I think that's fine. It's captured in the uh the policy and that and that's good. The so the final thing that I have is on the spot zoning. So I'm I'll just say that I'm a little bit hesitant on the uh on the uh the getting to the the policy level where we actually are prohibiting um are by policy strongly discouraging a spot zoning. Um and so in the policy portion, um you have uh this area of the backlog of of spot zones. We get those addressed, we finalize that. The question, it's more for council. So the question is on those existing long term, well run vacation rentals that are non compliant and not permitted under the the new bylaw. What do we do with those? Because I in I am concerned about shutting down well run vacation rentals that meet a need in the community. And the spots that we need is possible still a possible method for dealing those one off exceptional or different situations, special situations. And so that's probably the biggest hesitation. I don't think I need to go into debate. I'm just expressing a concern on the policy side.
So any comment, Councilor?
Yeah, maybe should have thought of that before voting in favor of this proposal, but I think what Mr. Simon's comment about um the preliminary process, having all those applications come forward before having to do a full spot zone probably makes that concern because well, not well, but council, any council of the day will have the opportunity to look on it case by case basis and determine if it is properly run and if there are concerns or if it's in a good area, then maybe that that's part of the applicants sort of story, you know what I mean? Like when they come forward with that application, that's part of it.
So through the mirror, Councilor Ryan, so on like when I look at this policy, it's just those existing ones, the ones that already have their permit in place.
Right.
So are you suggesting that maybe
Those the spot zoning ones that those are grandfathered in though, I thought.
No, these are these are the spot zones that have a
The eleven applications in your
Oh, yeah, totally.
So should we be allowing others to spot zone at this time or not, in your opinion?
In my opinion, it doesn't fit with the bylaw that was passed, so no.
So and then and I would argue that it fits within the bylaw of spot zoning. And this is a policy thing that's starting to override. So that that tool already exists. So it's 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 an interesting perspective.
Sure. Uh you can you mind if I, William? Yeah, William, Councilor Brookhill, any comment?
Um I my only comment is I have a similar request. How is that good?
Okay, so when we when we just look at the wording here, applications to spot zone uh to allow for short term rentals within residential buildings will not be supported to ensure residential housing stock is preserved for permanent residents. So that goes forward. And basically, that's a comment that staff stay to the applicant. And then it could still come to council for council to override that. Is that correct, Mr. Simon? Or can you just give clarification on that, please?
Through your worship, that is correct. The council policy does help give direction to staff. Council is not bound to follow the policy. Um it would be staff's preference, obviously, if this policy is upheld to the best of its ability to ensure, you know, to be very frank with and everyone knows it, we're we're in a serious housing crunch right now. Three years from now, we'll be in a bit of a different position. Um and something that I keep in mind, too, we did have Mackenzie Village. They're well underway with their construction. That'll be a hundred and twenty one units by the time everything's up and running that are eligible to be used as a vacation rental. So um you know, from a planning perspective, I don't know if we're going to be in a shortage of availability for different vacation rental units, given the fact that we've already had pretty uh I would say, you know, we've had pretty lax zoning regulations to allow for it throughout the city. There's a lot of properties that are zoned for it. And we are at the point now where we really need to start looking at housing stock for permanent residents because there's a severe shortage of rental housing stock.
Great. That's fair comment. So uh, Councilor Palmer, any comment after hearing those words?
Yeah, so so from my perspective, so policy item number two. Um uh to me is too strong because it's saying that uh applications to spot zone to allow for short term rentals within residential buildings will not be supported. It's talking about housing stock. Um and so for those non compliant that are already running, I I question the wisdom of that because there are it's
So let it change one word.
I might ideally, I would probably strike out all um all of number two, but I I think because this is at the committee, the whole level, there might be opportunity later on. We could talk about it more right now. But I haven't come up with a specific wording, but that's I just wanted to have that.
Could take up the word will and put in the word may.
That's good. I I like that. For that's a that's a simple
It does seem to have clear direction to staff. It's really kind of muddles the water, but it gives that opportunity for um you know, clear concise saying, we can't guarantee that council's going to allow your application to go forward, but it's possible. So, Councilor Sherlett, you have your hand up. Comment.
Thank you, worship. Um I don't think I agree with the with softening this wording. I think clear is kind in this case, and this is a staff policy, not a council policy, as was explained by staff. In my mind, having clear and honestly kind wording in the policy to say that this will not be supported at this time. Uh if there are further suggestions on wording and what that could look like, I think that would be more appropriate to come out of the housing action plan. To have some wording with maybe something around a sunset clause where we will revisit this. Um but with the talk of the report coming back to council in eighteen months uh to look at those stats and to reassess, um I think building in that feedback loop would be sufficient to adjust any of that wording, but to put in maybes in staff policies, I don't think it's going to be helpful for anyone.
Okay, thanks for the comment, Councilor Palmer. Um so uh further to Councilor Sherlett are just affirming on the wording. So may is is provides ambiguity in just for clarity, it is a this is a council policy to provide clarity to staff. So may uh stops that clarity to staff, but it's definitely this is a council policy for and and so the problem of the may word is planning says, well, what do we do with that kind of thing? So they want clarity. Um and I you know, this will come back to council anyway, but I'm I'm almost I'm wondering about capturing and it might be a whole other policy line on um on those exceptions of long term or short term rentals that make sense, that should be enabled to that perhaps should be enabled a spot zoning. So I'll think that through unless there's other things that council wants to stay.
Councilor Sherlett, I see your hand.
Thank you. Um yes, well, there's those two documents that will be coming forward in the coming months uh and maybe years. Um much of the timeline and the destination management plan for tourism. Uh but the more robust and comprehensive destination management plan, in my mind, could look at addressing the visitor needs. And then the housing action plan would be looking at the resident needs. So having those documents come forward, then ideally the destination management plan would identify any gaps in the service delivery of short term and tourism accommodation. Um so if there were something like an accessibility request, where if there were homes that were accessible to those with mobility issues um that were suitable for spot zoning for short term rentals, I could see that being a reasonable request. Um but to have those those boundaries and those needs identified through those planning documents, I think is going to be the powerful route to making sure that that policy is well guided, that's actually serving needs that are identifiable and measurable.
And thank you for the comment. And so I will go back to the original wording. And as Mr. Simon said, that doesn't uh doesn't stop people from making the application if they feel like they have uh a valid reason for making that application. It may not be supported by staff. We've seen that many times come to this table. And so that still gives people the opportunity to do it if that's their desire. And I just make that just for a comment and uh comment. Go ahead, Councilor Elliot.
Uh thank you, your worship. I think it will be difficult to if the process is known that you come in, you have an existing vacation rental, you come in, you'll get the no from the uh planning department because it's not in the existing fifty nine homes. And then you say your option is to go to council. It sort of undermines their 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 authority and it's kind of a weird place to be, I would think. Um but
Having gone through this before, where we've had, you know, sixty plus public hearings in a year on previous council, it gets to the point where, you know, let's just put it in a base and we'll talk about it later. We can't do that. There has to be some defined decisions made. So um
That's what I'm saying, Gary. It just becomes it'll and then it becomes a council problem. So we get there and say, do we like this proposal or not? And we're we're, you know, every different entity that comes in will have to evaluate. So it just adds a significant level of work to our 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 itinerary. Uh but but just on the real question is uh is there any indication of the number of, you said there were eleven pending spot zoning issues? How many people are operating outside of that?
Yeah, I totally understand. Mr. Simon, the numbers of short term rentals that are not compliant.
Through your worship, Councilor Elliot, the last review we did showed about two hundred and seventy, two hundred and eighty to three hundred properties that were operating and advertising. And we have currently, I believe, fifty valid business licenses that were issued. So it will be it will be quite a cleanup. And um from staff's perspective, there is definitely a concern that if we don't have strict and clear policy with very clear language embedded in it, that we will see a major influx of these applications that will detract from staff time on other projects.
Yes, thank you for that. And follow up, Councilor Elliot.
Wow, I think there are going to be a lot of upset people, I I I'm suspicious. Uh so I I I'm not sure. Thank you.
All right, good. Any other comments from council? So we've got one. Councillors just left the room for just a moment. Uh so my question to you, is there any appetite to put a motion on the table to move this short term rental draft policy to uh to the council table? And so if so, someone want to make a motion and then we can see if there's a second. So uh Councilor Sherlett, you're wanting to make that motion, is that correct? Okay, followed uh seconded by Councilor Brookhill. So the motion on the table is to move this short term rental draft policy from committee of the whole to uh the council table. And um I can actually bring that up in probably twenty minutes in the council meeting and see if there's any appetite to discuss it or to put it up in another council meeting. Mr. Simon, any comments on that? I didn't ask you that. I just kind of thrown out the uh the uh premise. So statement from you, sir.
Uh through your worship, nothing to add on. Again, staff's desire is to see all of this wrapped up in a nice tidy package. So all the bylaws, those three supporting bylaws that council will subsequently consider would be adopted concurrently with the policy pending direction and any recommendations for changes from council.
All right, so the motion on the table is to move the draft policy to uh to council. And any comments on that? Councilor Palmer, you have your hand up?
Um yeah, so I'm just going to put an amend amendment since we talked about the date. So on to amend that motion. It's a little bit tricky here just because it's I'm just going back to that date on uh uh number seven.
Okay.
Uh to get that to October thirtieth, but we may make do that after. I'm sure.
Yeah, absolutely. So that policy, when it goes to council, that date of implementation can now be changed uh at in council. Is that correct, Mr. Simon?
Uh through your worship, unless I hear differently from the corporate officer, I believe that there wouldn't be any issues if uh if council wanted to make a resolution to make that change and then adopt the policy after.
Okay, so
That would be fine, your worship. Um we can make those amendments in the council meeting following this.
All right, you're okay with that, Councilor?
Yeah, that that's fine, although it might be your way. So I just wondered from other council members on the the date of changing that to uh July or the July thirty first on number seven to October thirtieth, twenty twenty two. And that also results in number eight being changed to uh November first, twenty twenty two. I'm just wondering if any council members have any concerns with that kind of change.
Councilor Sherlett, is there a hand up and Councilor Ryan?
Thank you, worship. Um I kind of liked with your middle or the end of July date just because it's the middle of the summer, so it gives time to show. Uh I mean, I I'm not sure how many are operate very operational during the summertime, but there is a good solid summer season in Rebelstoke. Uh so it would allow staff to be able to start moving into that enforcement during a slower season for tourism, to start the ball rolling and deal with any hiccups and get that going smoothly before the fall season hits. Um by the end of October, November first, now we're getting into the peak sea as uh staff was reporting earlier, as we start getting into that heavier ski season um to deal with enforcement, starting enforcement at that point, I could see being less smooth um for both the staff, but also for the user experience, the citizen experience.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ryan.
Yeah, I agree. I think we should leave it the way it was originally um put in the uh proposed by staff. I feel like they have a good plan and uh will be able to carry it out. I think people have been also watching this for a while now, and those who are affected know about that. Um so even though it might be kind of intense, there'll be a lot of like similar responses, most likely going out to a lot of those proponents and yeah, I think it's time that we take action.
Okay, so any further comments uh on the motion on the table, Councilor Elliot?
Just I I'm not quite sure how how you see July is the off season and not October. I Nicole, uh I I mean, October, it would be more the off season and a month, you know, like basically you do implementing this thing in the middle of summer is a bit upsetting to many who are just uh making it work as it is. So uh I'm just wondering what you're thinking it.
Um by October, end of October, housing is already becoming a well becoming an issue. People are starting to rent long term rentals by September to get into the ski season. The ski season doesn't really pick up till Christmas, but the rental situation does pick up a little bit earlier. Um the to delay enforcement, to adopt these bylaws now and to delay enforcement until after a full summer season to me is a carte blanche to, well, you may as well just run it over the summer because you're not going to get a ticket. It'll just be educational for the whole season. Whereas starting the enforcement, like moving the enforcement into the next phase halfway through the season, gives that opportunity for education for an honest mistake, but then we move smoothly into enforcement and having a clear stated bylaw that we are using uh after so many years of not enforcing this.
So is it more sense to to say October one and to complete off season and then uh actual enforcement November one?
I think she just answered your question. She already answered your question. She's comfortable with the end of August.
Okay, well, then I disagree with it, sir.
Okay, not fine.
I'm not there.
But I'm just saying she's just answered your question, Counselor. I'm not trying to debate you. All right, uh so there is a motion on the table to just promote this to council. And then if you want to have further debate on dates and whatnot, that can happen. So any further comment on the motion on the table? Say none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Opposed? So note that Councilor Elliot and Councilor Ryan are opposed to going to council. This motion has been moved to council. It's passed. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to ten A annual report from the fire department. Chief De Rosi, you have the presentation for us.
Thank you, worship. Um I don't have a uh PowerPoint presentation, but a
PowerPoint presentation, but I will share my screen with you for the annual report. And I can speak to that briefly. And you should be able to see my screen.
You can, I think.
Excellent. So I just wanted to highlight a few things for you for the state of the Rebelstoke Fire Department for twenty twenty one. The combination fire department model worked very well. It supports up to thirty six volunteer firefighters with a career firefighters and. One of the things that we'd like to say is that our capabilities are growing each year, hopefully meeting or exceeding. Those of the community's needs. And so I just wanted to highlight a few things for you from last year. And mostly due to. A lot of people moving around. As you know, there's lots of people coming and going. So in twenty twenty one, we had five new members come on to the volunteer ranks. So that was a good thing. Unfortunately. With those new recruits comes along with some resignation, so we lost three. And I wanted to thank those three for their years of service. As you recall, in the fall of twenty twenty one, we did a recruitment drive where we gained sixty plus applications, having accepted fourteen new recruits into the twenty twenty two. So that's the, by my math, I think we're up about seven volunteers. So it's a bit of a revolving door there. On the career side of things, we did hire one volunteer firefighter into the career ranks, and that was to cover the parental leave. He is doing quite well and is fit in. Very well. He's just passed his probation for six months. And. We did purchase a number of equipment. Let's see, we got the quick attack monitor there and those are a large volume. Nozzle that is capable of being manned or staffed by one firefighter. To allow for a greater efficiency and effectiveness of our crew and. Resources. We did install a fragmentation containment container for the self contained breathing apparatus fill station. So it's a high pressure filling station. So if we had an air cylinder fail. During filling, the explosion would be contained within that fragmentation container. For incidents in twenty twenty one, we had three hundred and seventy. Draw your attention to the top right of the screen there from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty one. Our call ratios have been dropping. Which is very interesting, but I'm sure. When we look in the the future, the twenty twenty and twenty twenty one will have been highly affected by the COVID pandemic. In the bottom right corner there, we've got our percentages of our call ratios. So how much of our response is put into each of those different types of. Of calls, there's the fire alarms. Is by far the largest, followed by medical response, followed by MBIs. Public safety and education. Three hundred and seventy five inspections were done. In twenty twenty one. And the graph in the center right shows a five year trend on inspections. So inspections are increasing every year and that's due to the new builds and community growth and also occupancy changes from a. Building may change from a residential to a commercial, which would then facilitate requirements. For fire inspections. And the property losses. Interestingly, went quite low in twenty nineteen. We had very few losses in twenty nineteen and they spiked again just under a million dollars for twenty twenty. And twenty twenty one respectively. The value of the properties at risk, sixteen million dollars plus. And so firefighters effectively saved about fifteen and a half million dollars worth of property value. Training is ongoing. Every year we do. A lot of different types of training, but primarily our biggest focus is training the new recruits. To become effective and efficient firefighters. It takes about three years for that to truly happen. The first year is very, very busy with the. NFPA one thousand and one firefighter training. And then they spend the next couple of years adding on a number of additional skills and capabilities and competencies. And of course, the community events, we have the the fundraising. And in twenty twenty one, the firefighters raised over eighty five hundred dollars for both the B C burn fund. And the muscular dystrophy Canada fund. And so they split that up equally between the two charities and made those donations. So it was very good. Something that the community may not notice that our fire department also has four certified. Child passenger seat educators, child passenger safety educators. Always get that one mixed up. So if people need to make sure that their child. Passenger seat is properly installed. They can call in and make an appointment to have it checked and also they will help them if they need to move it from vehicle to vehicle. Help them understand how to safely and properly install it. And so for going into twenty twenty two. The fire department is is well staffed and and very strong and hopefully getting stronger. To concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Chief. I much appreciate the presentation and and what your staff's doing for the community. These little things, you know, like the child care's seat safety checks. Little to most of us who don't have kids at age, big thing for the parents. So appreciate the fact.
Absolutely.
Are able to do that. And, you know, your contributions to the community for the fight for the burn fund, that sort of thing is important. The cool thing or the great thing for us is to see that we've got volunteers who want to work and are coming on stream. So appreciate that. Thank you for that. Council, any comments or questions for Chief DeRosa? Say none. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Thanks again.
You're welcome.
We're going to move on to Parks and Rec First Order Report. Any comments regarding that? I don't see Mr. Natto here. But any comments or questions from council? Counselor Brooksville?
It's just nice to see things getting busier, programs running again. More people on the pool. So these days.
It's great to see that, you know, one of the things that we, along with, you know, most other businesses in the committee, are having a hard time getting staff and. So this weekend, we closed tomorrow and closed on Sunday because of staff. Counselor Palmer?
Yeah, they, one thing I actually clutched in that I had from the report, and it's not an important question as far as getting an answer, but. In twenty twenty two, our patron count is still down. And I'm. The previous year was COVID, but twenty twenty two, I think it's more to do with staff and so people, it's not open. So our patron count is now not because of. COVID fears, it's because we don't have staff.
That that's exactly.
Well, there were limitations on numbers as well in January.
Yeah, proportions.
Yeah, yes, but even before that, we were reducing hours. So, yes, yeah, it's the combination.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to ask for a motion to terminate this Canadian Home May, Counselor Palmer, seconded by Counselor Ryan, all in favor? Motion's carried. We're going to take a few minute break before we go to council. So, Ms. Boyd, do I need?